At 6:00 PM, we'll call the regular meeting of the Town of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission to order on Thursday, July 20th at 6:00 PM. First item of business is roll call. Mari Sella, if you could do that, please.
Commissioner Vanderstark.
Present.
Commissioner Kapalongo.
Present.
Commissioner Prue.
Present.
Vice Chair Adam.
Present.
Chairman Frost.
Present.
And both council liaisons are present. We have a quorum.
Yes, thank you very much. We appreciate our liaisons being here with us and also our town managers here with us tonight and our, I saw our town clerk earlier as well. Great. If you'd all please rise, I've asked Commissioner Kapalongo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item number four is Call to the Public. Let me read the call to the public so we're all clear on that. Call to the public for a public comment on issues and just to, I'm going to emphasize this, within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the commission shall not discuss or take action, in other words, we can't have conversations on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. And with that, are there any members of the public that would like to address this this evening? See, we have a couple, I believe, that have their hand raised online. And so again, with the council that issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission and just, you have three minutes each to speak. Courtney Ramirez, are you, can you hear us?
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. Yeah, can you all hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So I am speaking again on behalf of the temporary use permit for Western Crossing. So I would still, I still want to encourage you guys to vote no on this because the roads aren't ready, the infrastructure isn't ready, nothing is ready, and we're all concerned about safety. I don't know if any of you guys have gone out to the site, but you think the Anthem Streets are narrow? This subdivision streets are very narrow and they want to put this thing at the very corner of Centennial and 287. They claim there's only going to be a few visitors during the week. I call BS. And if this is located right there at that very first intersection, that's even going to be caused from more traffic backing up, causing issues. And this is all safety. So, you know, the staff has it typed in here that none of these things will interfere, it will not have a navigative impact on adjacent properties, won't constitute a nuisance or be detrimental to health, safety, peace, comfort, all that stuff. It will not unreasonably interfere with pedestrian or vehicular traffic or circulation. It's BS. I don't even know how you guys can even say that. You don't live here, you don't see it every day. The construction traffic alone in this neighborhood is dangerous. All these people right now even park on both sides of Centennial Park when they have 80 acres to park on. You know, going to college, you got to do prerequisites to get your degree, right? So they've been trying to get this temporary use permit and they're not even ready. Why are they putting the cart before the horse? And why are we even allowing this when none of these improvements are even done yet? You know? That's frustrating. And when you're living right next to it, it's even more frustrating. So, you know, we have got to learn from our mistakes in the past. And I know you guys keep talking about that, but, you know, even the street, I mentioned they're so narrow right now. If one car parks on the side of the road, you're not going to get an ambulance or a fire truck in there. And they want to put this right at the intersection. Why don't they move this way to the far east side to try to alleviate any traffic whatsoever at that intersection? This whole project is an absolute nightmare and I don't know how you guys are going to fix it. But I certainly don't want you guys to be granting these guys any stuff at all until these roads are done. Period. That is a hot topic, it's a safety issue, and I really want that at the top of your minds. Because everything about this right now...
That was your three minutes. Thank you for taking the time to address us.
Thank you.
Kelly Cox, can you hear us? Kelly, if you would unmute and make sure we can...
Yes, sir.
Okay, we can hear you now, thank you.
Hi, thank you. I agree with the, with what Courtney is saying. Everyone likes to looky looky and see what's going on and that can cause a lot of accidents, distracting drivers heading down the highway. So I do agree that a no vote on the temporary use permit until the roads are completely safe for everyone on Centennial Park Avenue and the turn lanes on the 287. It's not only a distraction, but it's unsafe for everyone coming into town on this road with this project being done.
Was that everything, Ms. Cox?
Yes, sir.
Super. Thank you for addressing us.
Thank you.
Is anyone in the audience here that would like to speak to the commission at this time? Okay, if not, we will close the call to the public. Item number five, discussion approval or disapproval. We have two meeting minutes to look at, regular meeting that occurred on June 1st, 2023. So we'll take that as the first discussion and when we get that taken care of, we'll come back and talk about the special meeting on June 22nd. So, commission members, comments, concerns, questions about the minutes as proposed for June 1st? Look good now? Okay, entertain a motion. I'll make a motion for approval then for the regular meeting minutes that occurred on June 1st, 2023, as presented.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June 1st, 2023, as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a, I made the motion and Vice Chairman Adam made a second. Is there, let me do a vote. On favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, looks like we have five ayes for that one. Okay, now the minutes from the special meeting conducted on June 22nd. Commission members, concerns, comments, questions, discussion? Entertain a motion. You need to have a motion for approval. That was for the June, we did the June 1st, but we handled them separately. So we did the June 1st, now we're doing the June 22nd. I will make the motion then for approval of the minutes of the special meeting conducted on June 22nd, as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have, I've made a motion and that's been seconded by Vice Chair Adam. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, I believe that was five, zero, pass. New business, item 6A, presentation by Penal County on Hunt Highway Construction. We have Joe Ramirez here as the Deputy Public Works Director and...
Ortiz. Turns out he moved you. It's the other Joe. Joe Ortiz.
Oh, yes.
Yes, we always get that confused. No biggie.
And I do, and I know that too, that's what's terrible. Sorry.
No problem, no problem. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Joe Ortiz, Penal County, Public Works Deputy Director. It's my pleasure to come before you today at the request of Town of Florence Management to speak on a quick briefing of one of the Penal County projects that we have going on in your vicinity, specifically Hunt Highway and Arizona Farms area. Just a quick, quick statement, I guess, is, it's purely my pleasure to be here today and speak with you, but I also want to give you other opportunities or alternatives if you do have questions or want some briefings on other Penal County projects. We do have our website out there that is attached to Clear Glove, which we give updates on a standing moment that each time the project manager has some major impacts, they update that. So that would be another tool for you if you'd like to take a look at it. If you've got questions, reach out to me and I get you linked up to that web address if you need it. So we're talking today about the Hunt Highway, Arizona Farms area. So Hunt Highway project limits are from Magma Road on the north, continuing south along Hunt Highway to approximately Union Pacific Railroad tracks. That's basically, the tracks are just a little bit south of Magma Ranch. And then we also have the limits of Arizona Farms itself, which is at the intersection of Hunt Highway, continuing easterly to the second set of railroad tracks that are out there, which is basically the limits, Town of Florence City limits that we're matching up with. The project itself consists of, or the scope of work consists of, basically an overlay of Hunt Highway, majority of it, there is some micro slurry south of Magic Grants that's a little different than this one and a half inch overlay, but it also consists of, in that intersection improvements of putting in a left turn lane and a temporary traffic signal as well. Arizona Farms is mainly just a inch and a half overlay for the entire length between Hunt Highway and the town limits. Currently, we're on the final phase of the project itself, which is next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, the 25th through the 26th. The 25th, we're trying to finish off the last leg of the overlay on Arizona Farms. We just had some bad luck with our AC provider, asphalt provider ran out, so we had to come back and reschedule. So that's rescheduled for the 24th. Also, parallel to that are the final improvements on Hunt Highway, which is along that Magma Ranch area and doing a micro slurry for that whole area. The, and finally, on the 26th, we plan on activating the temporary signals for that left turn lane to make it fully active by the end of the day on that 26th. There will be some, some striping that's going to be going on, but that's going to be done at night, so there shouldn't be any real impacts of traffic at that point. And I believe that's about it unless the commission has questions for me.
Commission members?
Well, my question is, what, why is it taking so long, number one? And number two, why are we spending the money to resurface that road when it should be scheduled to, you know, to widen that area?
Yep.
But number one, why is it taking so long to get this little job done?
There are several reasons, because there's other projects in the area that were impacting the traffic flows and still kind of are, but we are trying to minimize. Pulling off the Band-Aid, it's going to hurt, no matter what, but we're trying to minimize it because there's other activity in the area that was going on that we were hoping to get at least improvements for that left turn lane at that intersection. That was our main kick. Now that those utility projects are complete, that's why we went ahead and moved forward with the rest of it. It wasn't ideal, I grant that. Honestly, there is no ideal scenario for that location just because of the volumes and just the whole timing of it. But back to your point with the Hunt Highway Phase 5 project, the, I can brief you on that too, and that kind of ties into what we did, why we did. So the Hunt Highway Phase 5 portion, we had a kickoff meeting here in, I believe, May with partners. It's a partnering project with the Town of Florence. And that was just the design kickoff. The, the major challenges for this project are probably going to be Union Pacific Railroad at that crossing at Hunt Highway, you know, just north of Oasis, north of Hiller. And our timing of all that is going to take several years just to get approval and clearance from Union Pacific. They just do not move quick. It's their challenge. And reality, it's going to be a tough sell to get them to approve it, period. It's never an easy issue when it comes to Union Pacific. So with that all in mind, we don't anticipate getting approval from Union Pacific probably till the summer of '25.
Yes, that's just not acceptable. There's got to be some leverage somewhere to get those folks to cooperate.
If you got that leverage, we're willing to listen. We just don't have it. They're an entity of their own that, it's, our only real leverage is probably going through the ACC, but even that, they're, they're a huge monster. We had that same problem everywhere we go with that.
You know, the growth here in this area, in another two years, there's going to be at least another 500 homes right in this area. 500 more families, that's at least 500 more cars trafficking. I mean, we're, right now, we're way behind on infrastructure. There's got to be somebody or someplace in the state of Arizona or the county, Penal County, or wherever, to move this thing forward, to avoid this terrible delay that you say the railroad is causing. You know, I'm just a, I'm a grocer, a businessman, but I don't understand how we can allow this kind of delay to be, to continue. It's not acceptable in my view, and I don't know if my colleagues up here agree with me or not, or even the town council, but really, you know, this is not acceptable.
Well, I appreciate your concerns, I do. And like I said, if you have any ideas, the town has any ideas, we're willing to sit at the table and talk. Like I said, it, it's, it's one of those issues that not only Penal County sees, the Town of Florence, I'm sure, comes across that issue all the time. It's, it's a national issue. It's not just a Penal County, Town of Florence issue.
Well, I'm not accepting it.
No, it's frustrating as hell. Everybody answers to somebody. Union Pacific has to answer to somebody, somewhere along the line.
We're talking two more years before we even get started, really.
Well, we're in the design phase of it and that's what, how long, it's going to take a little bit to get designed and Union Pacific doesn't even want to talk to you until you have a design in play.
In a previous life, I lived through this same scenario and it's every bit of what Joe was talking about. It is just like pulling fingernails out to try to get action and they, they don't answer to anyone and they take their sweet time. And because they do this all across the United States, you just kind of get in line with what they have going on and it takes forever.
Yeah. And one of the, I guess, approaches that we're trying to do with Union Pacific is they, they don't like at-grade crossings. That's the bottom line. They do not like at-grade crossings. But what we're trying to do, we have a study going on to gather all our at-grade crossings that we have within Penal County, and we're trying to dangle a carrot in front of them to say, okay, we're willing to get rid of two of these at-grade crossings if you give us this one. And trying to sweeten the pot with them to hopefully get them to move a little quicker. Is it going to work? I'm not sure, but that's one of our approaches that we're trying to do.
Well, that's all I have to say. I'm not satisfied, not happy, on behalf of the people of Florence. I appreciate your diligence and trying to work something out, so.
Yep.
I'd like to keep this on the agenda for every meeting so that we, we talk about this every meeting we have. That's my...
Maybe we can do it about once a quarter. I don't think we'd want to impose on Joe to come back every meeting, but maybe once a quarter to get an update would be good.
Okay. Sure. Thank you.
No problem.
Thanks for listening.
Yes, I get it, I get it. Your frustrations are frustrations, I'm telling you, it is.
Thank you, Joe, very much.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, item 6B, discussion review of open meeting law requirements and town policies. And just to kind of give the commission a genesis on this, Vice Chair Adam and I had the opportunity to sit down with Lisa a couple of weeks ago and talk through some things. And one of the thoughts that came out of that meeting was we probably just needed a little bit of tutelage on open meeting laws so that we're all on the same understanding and whatnot. And she was gracious enough to say that she'd be happy to come and do that, and I'm glad to see that she was able to get this in her schedule for this evening. So with that, Lisa, we'll turn the time over to you for this tutelage.
Well, I want to thank you for giving me time tonight and I'll try to go as fast as possible. I also want to introduce the lovely and talented Cliff Matice, who happens to be our town attorney, and as always, he will help me with this presentation even though he's not standing with me. Tonight, we're going to talk about the open meeting laws, rules of procedures, and parliamentary procedures. So what you have is you have a lot of presents that I have given you tonight, and one of those comes from our PIO, Jeff Graves, and that is the folder that you see before you with the beautiful town seal. Inside, you'll see an open meeting law guide, parliamentary procedures that have been adopted by the Town of Florence, robbers' rules of orders, rules of order simplified, and the ABCs of parliamentary procedure. The other resource that I will say, it's about five inches thick, is our town code. It's available online and it is fully word searchable, so it makes it lots of fun to do research. Open meeting law is a section of Arizona State Statute that states that the public policy is that meetings shall be open to the public and conducted in an open fashion. Notices and agendas provide such that the public will understand what items are coming before the board so they can have a right to know whether they'd like to attend. Open meeting law, Mari, how can I get rid of this little... There you go, thank you. Open meeting law and advisory committees. Open meeting laws, advisory committees are subject to the open meeting law and any committee that is appointed by council is subject to the open meeting law. So they have to go through the same exact rules and regulations as the town council has to go through. Open meeting law states that meetings shall be open to the public, excluding executive sessions. Legal actions must take place in public, at a public meeting, and the purpose proposing and discussing of action must take place in a public meeting. And only items that are listed on the agenda may be discussed. It's a very difficult statement and it seems so pure and so true to say only, we only discuss items on the agenda, but any two-way communication on an item that's not listed on the agenda has the possibility of a public saying, hey, I would have wanted to hear that conversation and I would have liked to be present. So they can turn us in to a lovely group called the Omlot. It's the open meeting law group from the Attorney General's Office. And so, open meetings laws, basically what they do is they maximize the public access to make sure that everything is resolved in public. That means that if there happens to be an item that we want to talk about and that's kind of related to a topic, but isn't necessarily related to the topic, that they want us to err on the side of caution and stop the discussion on that item and propose it for a future agenda. That way, we can advertise it to the public and anyone who's interested can attend. Open meeting law requires us that notices are posted 24 hours prior to the meeting. That includes all addendums, and that those items that are listed on the agenda are clearly understandable what items we're going to be talking about. Call to the public has been a discussion under several boards and sometimes the council, so I thought I would go into the call of some of the rules that you haven't seen me present on, because I know many of you have attended. Are my basic parliamentary procedures. I know many of you have attended how to chair a board and commission. So from this point forward, hopefully you're going to be hearing all new things. Call to the public allows for the public to address the governing bodies on those topics that are under the jurisdiction of the board. So say somebody was calling, coming in and they were complaining about something that is underneath the jurisdiction of the school board or of Penal County. That's not necessarily underneath our jurisdiction and we don't necessarily control that. So it's always good to let the public know where they should be discussing that and which body has control over those issues. There can be no discussion with the public. Public body may ask that staff to meet with the person, may defend a criticism at the end of public, at the end of call to the public. So say there's five speakers, we can't defend the criticism after each speaker, but we have to wait all the way to the end to where every member of the public has had a chance to speak and then we can defend ourselves against criticism or defend the town or the commission against criticism. And you may request that an item be placed on a future agenda. Now, this is, everywhere you see, I'm not going to read it to you, but everywhere you see the blue, I'm just denoting what rule that is and where you can find it in the lovely handouts that I provided you. And I've also provided you with the PowerPoint presentation as a handout, so if you want to research more, please do so. If you want to talk to me about it, give me a call. I love to have these conversations. So, public participation underneath the...
Excuse me, do you want us to hold questions to the end or should we ask them?
You can ask them as we go.
So on the page before about putting, asking for an item to go on an agenda?
Yes.
Does that need a second or just by asking if the public speak in and I ask, can we put that on a future agenda? Is it...
The staff would say if it's underneath the jurisdiction of the council and the board says it, what the staff does is they watch the nods, and if there's two or more, we definitely put it on. The chair can put anything on the agenda as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so underneath call to the public, and this is an open meeting law section, it says, while the public must be allowed to attend and listen to deliberations, the law does not provide, does not establish a right for the public to participate in the discussions or in the ultimate decision of the body. And the state law is very clear, that's a direct quote from the Arizona State Statute, and there's the Attorney General's opinion that I've also listed there. Other statutes, however, may require public participation, and those are in the form of public hearings. For example, zoning laws, liquor license, rules associated with fines, fees, taxes, budgets, all of those have a public notice. The public has a right to hear and to be heard on those matters. So, common questions that are listed at the very end of the open meeting law packet, it states, does the public have the right to speak during the meeting? The Attorney General has answered, the public does not have the right to speak or disrupt the meetings, however, the public may allow to be contact, comment via the public, via a call to the public. And then it asks, is the public body required to have a call to the public? A call to the public is not mandatory, but a public body may put a call to the public on their agenda. So those communities that don't have a call to the public, they're not doing anything wrong, that's the choice of their council. Our council has chosen to have a call to the public at the beginning of council meetings and at the end of the council meetings. Planning and Zoning Commission has chosen to have their call to the public at the beginning of the meetings, and that's perfectly acceptable. Limitations on call to the public, the presiding officer may limit the number of speakers heard on a non-agenda topic. The presiding officer may limit the number of speakers heard on a non-agenda topics at a single meeting to allow for the meeting to proceed in a timely manner. So if you think about it, I'm sure that all of you have had a meeting where there is 100 people that want to speak, and if each one was allotted for three minutes, we might not be getting out of here until midnight. So, the rules of procedure does allow for the chair to state that I'm allotting two minutes to each speaker. I'm allotting a minute and a half to each speaker. That is underneath the guise of the chair. Oral communications during a council meeting may not be used to lodge charges or complaints against any employee of the town of Florence, regardless of such employees as identified in the presentation by name or by other references that tend to identify him or her. Any such charges or complaints against an employee shall be submitted during the normal business hours to the town manager. So what that's saying is, during a call to the public, if someone is upset with staff, that is day-to-day operations. So during Call to the Public, as members of the commissions, you should stop anybody who's making a personal attack against staff and ask that they seek out the town manager. Town manager's in charge of day-to-day operations, and town manager's in charge of personnel matters, and that would be appropriate to handle that. So that's part of the rules of procedure. I'm just throwing that in for good measure. So, under the open meeting law, minutes requirements from the open meeting law, the date, the time, the place of the meeting held, the list of who's in attendance from the governing body, information regarding matters considered or discussed, minutes must summarize the discussion, including the topics addressed, and identify the speakers who participated in the discussion, description of all legal actions proposed and discussed, or actions taken included the vote, such as three to two in your minutes, and the name of the motion maker. Typically, we put in, on motion of Chair Frost, seconded by Vice Chair Adams, and approve the minutes of the date. And then, in parentheses, we'll put 5-0. And so that's how we do that. Underneath the rules of procedure, the town council has adopted rules that state that the town's clerk's office will supply support to council, and that we will take notes, but that written action minutes are done instead of verbatim minutes. They shall be taken as a brief accounting of the issues discussed and the actions taken and compiled entered into the permanent record books. And so, and that means that we've been instructed by council underneath the rules and procedures on Page Six, that we do action minutes or summary minutes for the town of Florence. So I want to talk a little bit about open... Yes, sir?
Sorry, I've got to push the green button. Just so that it's clarified and there's not any confusion, can you just elucidate what action minutes are versus regular minutes? Because for this board, you just do regular minutes, you do not do action minutes, correct?
This, so there's two things. So, action minutes, action minutes used to be called summary minutes until the legislation decided that those who attend our meetings deserve the right to know what the council, what your board voted on immediately. So now, the state law says the action minutes are merely, did the item pass and what was the vote? And so, those go up for council within 48 hours. For a board, it goes up, I don't, it's more time, but I don't want to say the time because I don't have it on the tip of my tongue, and I don't want to be wrong in the record. But it's a longer period of time. And then, so those are just on motion of, seconded by, the exact action with no details. Then what happens is, we create summary minutes that include the actions that are taken and a clear and concise consolidation of the conversations that are heard, and those come to you for approval. And those are your summary minutes. Okay? So, underneath the open meeting law, one of the very clear violations would be any deliberation between less than a majority of the members of the governing body would violate that. So if two of you went and talked, and then two more of you went and talked, and you're deliberating off the floor, you're having conversations, and you're knowingly knowing who's going to vote what way, that's a violation of the open meeting law. And circumventing the process of having the discussion in public, such as splintering the quorum, is a violation. And they clarified the law to say, it doesn't matter whether you're talking to people on the phone, whether you're talking through email, or any of those things. Splintering of a quorum, talking about the items, anytime we're talking amongst a quorum and we're offline, even if it's two here, one here, is a violation. Public officials should refrain from activities that may undermine the public confidence and make sure that decision-making is happening in public. Cliff, should I ask you periodically if you want to jump in and say anything?
Thanks, Lisa.
Can I ask a quick question on that, just to make sure I'm getting the math right?
Sure.
So, let's say we have a hypothetical situation where something comes up, and Vice Chair Adam calls me on the phone and says, hey, this is what I understood. Is that what happened? As long as that's just between two of us, it's okay? But if we start, if we get a third person also, we have a majority, then we've got a problem?
Then you have a quorum, then you're talking about public business offline. That's not supposed to ever happen.
Okay. But if it's just the two of us?
Yes, that's fine. And there's even been attorneys...
Lisa, so, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair members, you are right, that discussion would not be a quorum, it would be between two of you, but the reason that is dangerous is if one of you even makes a unilateral discussion or discusses a topic that's going to be in front of your board or within your jurisdiction, and you also propose taking an action, that can be a violation, even though it's not among a quorum of three. The other way that that is a problem is if then you run into the potential that person number two heard from person number one, and now the next day, person number one talks to person number three on the board, and you're now discussing things amongst the quorum, and that can happen electronically also. So that's why the law is structured, that if there is a question about that, that you either go to the staff liaison, and if there needs to be new information, you ask that that might be presented at the next meeting, or you ask during a public meeting, such as was done this evening, that another, you know, a matter come in front of, a future agenda item. That's the more appropriate way to handle that. And, of course, if there is a gray area, the law requires that we take the assumption that it should be discussed in public and that you shouldn't discuss it off to the side.
Okay, now, just another goofy hypothetical. Let's say there's a community event happening, and I show up there, and two more show up at that event. One of us need to leave, or do we just stay apart from each other?
No, and that's actually a good question that comes up frequently, particularly with council members. Usually, what Lisa will do is if we know ahead of time that a quorum may be attending a public event, she'll agendize it as just that public event and that the quorum may attend, but obviously, no agenda item because we're not going to be discussing anything as a board or a council, but it's done just as a backup to let everyone know that they're in attendance. Of course, while they're there at that event, they don't, you know, they're not restricted, but they obviously shouldn't be three gathered discussing a topic that's coming up in front of the board, you know, next week, but they can discuss other matters at hand in life, or generally what's happening in the town, that type of thing.
A good example of that is when there is a general plan, when we're going through the general plan process and we're doing those charrettes. The clerk's office actually posted a notice for every town of Florence Board and Commission, and said that a quorum of the following boards and commission may be present, but based on their presence, there'll be no action taken on those items. They're merely participating in a study.
And I was thinking even more generally, I know with situations like that, if you have any inkling, you're going to post it. But I'm talking about some sort of a community event where all of a sudden, there's three of us there, and it hasn't been posted.
It's interesting, because usually, if three of you are there, you're there with your family, you're not sitting together, you're not alone in a corner whispering together. And so, it's not only how you're at the event, who you're with at the event, it is the appearance of what's happening at the event. And we would say, please be cautious in the appearance of what's happening. Because if anyone did see three members of you standing in a corner whispering, saying, oh, boy, there's only three more corn cups left, and I really want to get one, let's get up there and get it, people are going to think you're talking about planning and zoning.
And that does relate to the appearance, I mean, there are cases that have been investigated by the Attorney General's Office, when you have, you know, groups from a board that are going to dinner together, and, you know, they're seen leaving the restaurant. So then, someone in the community sees that and says, okay, what's going on here? And then it gets uncomfortable, because then the investigator from the Attorney General's Office starts pulling people in and saying, okay, what happened here? Were you there? They can take a deposition, for example, under oath, and ask you what was discussed. So it's just, it doesn't mean that just because you attend a public event that you automatically must disperse or someone needs to leave. It's just be very cautious and not discuss matters that are coming before your board, and certainly not propose, you know, actions or positions to each other in that situation.
Yes, and we hope that we will have to post a notice of quorum for Casino Night, because it's coming up on July 29th, and it's a great way to support the community, and I can guarantee a quorum of your council would be there.
Well, I'm just going to, I guess the way to sum that up is, it's okay if we're all in the same place, we just can't talk shop.
That's absolutely right.
Which, when we're out having fun, we're not talking shop.
But...
Can I just back up a little bit? I fully understand this, and most of my conversations with the chair are procedural. I can't open the file or stuff like that, so it's not content-wise. But I'm sure council residents do this all the time. I run into people on the street, I have a meeting, and people come running up to me and want to talk. So, my impression is that I just let them speak. I don't give an opinion, but anybody is free to call me or talk to me. Is that true?
That's true. And we will tell you that, especially when you have an item becoming before you and you're in the due diligence period, we would ask for you to wait for your research to be done, wait for that public hearing to be closed, make sure that you are diligently doing your job before you express your opinions. Because while we are trying to gather all this information, hear the public, make sure that we hear both the presenters who may be involved in the project, as well as the public who's speaking on behalf of the other citizens that are there, we can't say that we finished our due diligence until we've heard everything, the presentations, the public hearings, everything. And once that's closed, that's at the point to where you can unleash your opinions on a matter. Bear, Cliff?
Yeah, and just one thing to add to that, that goes along with creating the proper record for your decision on a particular case or an item that's on your agenda, because certainly, it's inevitable that members of the public are going to approach you as a board member or a council member in public. And as you said, you may just listen, but it's important that you make your decision in the future based on the public record that's made during the public meeting or hearing, whichever the case may be, because we have a requirement as a municipality that we have to make our decisions as members of boards and councils based on the record that's presented during the meeting. So, you're absolutely correct, you keep an open mind, but that doesn't mean you have to say, I can't talk to anyone, I can't listen, but you still need to be aware, you have that responsibility to base your decision as best you can, based on the record that's been presented to you and that's contained in the public agenda item packet.
That raises a really interesting point. What if somebody tells me something and does not come forward at the commission hearing? So it is not public knowledge. That should not influence my decision?
It's hard for anyone to jump into your head and know whether it did or not, but you are obligated to make a decision based on the record here in the case in front of you. What is presented here and what is presented by the staff and what's in the packet, those are the items to consider for the decision.
There is a, there is this particular section in the open meeting law that states that if somebody individually makes a comment to you, that during your statements, you may share that on the floor with your fellow members. So, meaning that if somebody approached me in Circle K and said, I can't be here tonight, but I want you to know XYZ fact, if XYZ fact is not brought up during the course of the public hearing, you can say, I would like to put it on the record that a person talked to me and felt this. You don't really need to even say their name, they talked to me and they felt this, and you're allowed to enter it into the record. Just like, you can also encourage anyone who's talking to you about how they feel that, I know that our senior planner, Mari, she posts right on the agenda to communicate through her, with her, and she can print those out and make them public and have it be part of, that public comment be part of your packet. And so, that's another great way to get information from the public. I skipped over one, it just said, basically, that the Attorney General's Office has decided that open meeting law violations can also happen in email, we also discussed that. And it's twofold, because it falls underneath the records requests as well as the open meeting law. So it's two different statutes, but both fall underneath that. So, what it states is that it means a gathering in person or through technology devices of a quorum of members. A public body discusses or takes actions, so it's discusses or takes actions, including deliberation by a quorum. This includes one-way communications by one member of a public body that is sent to the quorum of members. An exchange of electronic communication amongst the quorum of members that involves discussion, deliberation, or taking action by a public body concerning matters likely to come before for action. So if you know something's coming for you, coming before you in a year even, we can't have those communications and those discussions, is what it's saying. They have to wait till they're on the floor. So, in 2018, legislation amendments defined a meeting to include one-way communications, exchange of electronic communications, and then you have to weigh out what was the action. So just because it happens does not mean that you're in direct violation, it means that it has to be weighed in the context of what happens, and the attorneys would do that. It wouldn't be somebody like me. It'd be the attorneys. So, open meeting law pitfalls and how to avoid them. Don't pull your members. Disband a quorum, disband immediately if a quorum's not in attendance. I know we've had hiccups in other boards and commissions where, because we had people from Phoenix or Tucson coming in to present, they felt that they owed it to them to sit through the presentation. The only problem with that is you're not sitting as a body if there's not a quorum. So that means everybody goes home, and even the presenter has to come back another day. Avoid side discussions during a public meeting. The public has a right to hear every comment. Do not text or share communications on a public phone during... Any text communication, any notes that you make become part of the record, and the public can ask for that. And so, we tell you, avoid that pitfall, we don't do that. And of course, if you have questions in the meeting, ask for help, staff is here to help you, your liaisons are here to help you, and so...
So, was I in violation when I assumed that my colleagues were in agreement with how I felt about the issue? It's a, don't pull, go back to that, don't pull, yeah. Did I, was I in violation this evening? When I, I didn't pull, I just assumed.
You were not in violation, you were not in violation of the open meeting law when, I assume we're talking about when Penale County was here?
Yeah.
We were not in violation. We had a, we had a director of Penale County who came and spoke to us about jurisdictions under the control of Penale County, and we were fortunate to have him come and speak to us. So we were gracious to have that happen.
Okay.
And I would...
Go ahead.
I would say, Mr. Commissioner, that at most, you expressed your own personal opinion and asked that a matter be placed on a future agenda, so you were fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Lisa, when we last met, you gave at least two of us some tutelage on if we would like to explain a vote that happens, and can you share that with the board, please?
I'd be happy to. So, at the time that a, when you're voting, at the time, so if you're going to vote no and you want to express your opinion of why you're voting no, you can turn to the chair and say, may we have a roll call vote? The chair can say, yes, I'll ask for a roll call vote. While you're saying aye, or you're saying nay, you can say a simple explanation of why you're voting in that way. If it's a simple vote, that's an aye or a nay, and we're counting, and it passes, and you voted no... you voted no, and you want to explain your vote, under call to the board, call to the commission, it, it is a beautiful place and the perfect place to explain your vote. That's why it's there for you. At the end, when you're wrapping up, you can say, I just wanted to explain my vote on item 7C, and the reason why I voted no, these are my reasons. And you can say, I'd like the record to reflect. If you say words like, I would like the record to reflect, then what you're doing is telling somebody who works in the clerk's office, I want to guarantee that this statement is going to appear within the minutes. And so those are little tricks of the trade.
Okay.
And, and just so that everyone knows, I think this is common knowledge, but just in case, the clerk's office is now taking care of all of our minutes for our board.
Hmm, yeah.
And we apologize because we did make errors, because we're getting to know your voices, we're getting to know whose, whose voice is the second. It's a very hard word, second, to be able to pinpoint who's saying it. So I appreciate your patience while we are learning your voices. So, membership, let's talk about our members.
Excuse me, before we leave that, I just wanted to follow through because at the end of the day, just speaking for me, the reason why I would want to go on record, why I did not vote in line with the other commissioners, is because that is my message to the council. So I would ask that our council members that are sitting with us and paying great attention to it, that when it becomes, it comes before you, that those words are with you so you can explain why one of the commissioners felt that they couldn't support. Thank you.
Thank you. So when I talk about membership, I'm talking about boards and commission memberships. So that's pursuant to ordinance, council adopts an ordinance that forms a board, and, um, the only real requirement is that they have to attend necessary meetings, meaning that you cannot miss more than three consecutive meetings. If you do, you're automatically removed from the board. We ask that you attend the trainings that we put on, and I've seen several of you at my trainings each year, so I do appreciate that. And we have you sign an oath of office, you come in, you raise your hand, do an oath saying you pledged that you are going to support the ordinances of the Town of Florence, the laws of the state of Arizona, and the constitution of the state of Arizona. So under, um, action and recommendations and approval by council, so when you send an action to council, council can accept that recommendation, they can confirm the recommenda- not accept the recommendation, they can confirm the resignation, recommendation, they can change the provision. So if you're sending stipulations, and say you send five stipulations, they can take two of the five stipulations and add it, or they can create their own stipulations, or they can say, we're not ready to make this vote, it needs further consideration, and they can send it back to a board or commission. And all boards and commissions serve an advisory role to council, the mission of the board and commission is established in the ordinances, and underneath the Town of Florence, all except for, um, the IDA serves a three-year term, and they serve at the discretion of the town council. So underneath the, um, composition, you have your officers, you have your chair, you have your vice chair, you have your members, you have your staff liaison, and you have your council liaisons. So let's talk about that, the officers. So the chairperson is who controls the meeting. They, um, moderate the meeting, they make sure that the meeting maintains civility, they, um, speak on behalf of the public. So if you are all talking, he may clearly take a consensus, and he'll say, the board feels that, he's speaking on your behalf, he's hearing what you say. His job is to also make sure that every member is heard. So he will often, I've watched your films to be able to do this, so he'll oftentimes ask each one of you how you feel, if you haven't said anything, do you have any comments? His job is to make sure everyone, everyone is heard. He retains a vote, just like anyone else. Vice chair serves in the absence of the chair. Um, your council members liaisons, what is their role and why are they here? So council liaisons, they're individualized for every community, some community assigns council liaisons to boards and commissions, some do not. And so as your, as your liaison, they're serving to where, when your item goes back up to council, and if council has questions on your item, that they can say, I was at the meeting, this is what happened, this is what planning and zoning was thinking, this is why that happened. But it's at the council level that they're giving those. So when they're sitting in your, your, they're here at your table, they're listening to items that have yet to come before council. So they have to preserve their rights, just like during a due diligence period, you preserve your rights, and you wait until you're through your public hearing process, your due diligence period. So while you're still going through your due diligence period, you have to remember, their due diligence period hasn't started yet. So they haven't started yet. It takes the closeout of your public hearing with a recommendation to the council before their due diligence period is going to start. So why, that's one of the reasons why they don't speak at the meetings, or they don't tell you how they feel about an item, they're here listening. They're here to forward your thoughts and opinions if it's unclear to council when they're on the council floor. The other thing they're here for is to help you. If you get stuck making a motion, if you wonder if it's a violation in parliamentary procedures, if you think your guys get a lot of training from us, they get training from us, we send them to, um, new council orientation where the League of Arizona Cities and Towns trains them, and so they get bookend on training from staff, from the state, and so they're, they're ready to speak on that way. And they cannot speak on behalf of the town council at these meetings because county council hasn't voted. And when they speak individually, they're speaking as council, when it's items that have appeared before the council and action has been taken, then they can say, council voted on this and council feels. But if it hasn't been before council, then they're speaking as individuals. Does that make sense?
Hmm.
So members, what do staff members do? They prepare your agendas, we prepare your minutes, um, we'll help the chair make sure that it's in open meeting law, is in compliance, and we're here as a guide if the chair needs it. Um, we distribute information to the members, place items on agendas, establish and maintain positive working relationship with all members, bring up, bring absent members up to date so if you missed, you can call up your liaisons and say, what did I miss in the meeting? You know, bring me up to speed so that I can be ready to go at the next meeting. Your, um, staff liaisons will also request your legal opinions from your attorney, and oftentimes your attorney will work with them so that he could, your staff can come back and give you those, those legal updates. And they report any special circumstances or issues of concern to the town managers, and of course, being experts in the seat, they offer expert advice to the commission during meetings. So, Town of Florence states that, so the Town of Florence formally adopted, um, rules of procedure simplified. What that means is have all your discussion, talk it all out, figure out what you want to do, and then make your motion. Under Roberts Rules of Order, before you can have discussion, you must make a motion on the floor and a second on the floor. And so in order to get away from that, council said, let's go with more simplified parliamentary procedures, but any item that is not covered underneath the Robert, the simplified rules, we defer to Roberts Rules. So that is why I gave you both the handout of the simplified rules, and I gave you a booklet that is Roberts Rules. So you have double the information, double the fun. Um, we're gonna talk a little bit about maintenance of order, maintaining order in the meeting. It is the presiding officer who is responsible for maintaining order at all times during a meeting. No person should be speaking unless recognized by the presiding officer, and all remarks that address should be to the presiding officer. So what happens when the meeting gets a little bit rowdy, you hear people chanting in the background, saying yay, saying boo. We remind the audience that no outbursts are allowed. If they're still going on and booing is happening, or cheering is happening, depending on who's speaking, we're warned of a cooling down period, which says, let's do a 10-minute break. If it persists, if it persists, we'll have that 10-minute break. If it's still wooing or cheering in the audience, then we have to decide whether it's reasonable, whether we can hear, whether we're conducting the meeting, and it's, and we're still operating in a faction, that if something happens, we're gonna have a good record of it. If not, we need to postpone it to another date and time. I can tell you, you'd think, when will this ever happen? In the Town of Florence, some of you may remember, we actually had to rent out the high school auditorium when we had a little issue that came before the town council. And there was more than 500 people in attendance at a basketball court, and it was very, very difficult to hear because you're in a basketball court, so what do you want to do? You want to cheer, right? People go up and speak on behalf of it, you cheer, it echoes. We had to shut down the meeting because our machines weren't picking it up, our recording devices weren't picking it up, we could not hear the chair speaking, it was a different circumstance, we had to do something new. And so we stopped it, and we regrouped. And every, once in a while, you'll have that situation, yes, sir?
So, um, what, what is your suggestion that we do if something gets out of hand and we need to call a recess? What do we physically do?
If you call a recess, that door right there, you march right off that stage, don't walk off the stage, go through the curtain, come down the stairs, go through that door, and you're gonna go right into the kitchen. And you're gonna stay there and then come out and take back. Your staff will help control the outcome of the meeting, the public, while you're in there, and then you'll come back. While you're in there, there can be no discussion on the items on the agenda. It's a recess. There's bathrooms there, there's waters there, everything you need there to have a recess is there.
And I noticed we have two peace officers with us this evening, and, and they have been in, in a few meetings with us, and we appreciate that. What, what is the expectation so that we know in that situation what, what they would be doing?
In that situation, if you have, let's say that you have a meeting where, um, there is people who are just impassioned about the topic, and they're in an uncontrollable state of passion, and they're angry, say they're angry, then you can ask them to sit down. If they will not sit down, you can ask them, ask the IT people to shut off the mic. If they're still at the mic, you can ask for the police officers to escort them out of the room. And your team that's here is your police chief and your commander, and both are, are very well in the art of escorting out of the room without causing any type of liability for the Town of Florence, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
We don't think that we'll ever come to that, but it's always good to have those tools. You never know what kind of future items will happen, will, where you will have passionate people come to the meeting, and you never know what type of item will bring on that passion. So it's always nice to have a law enforcement pressure, presence, and I do appreciate and thank, um, the chief and the commander for being present.
Thank you.
So, rules of procedure on decorum, the town council, this is from their rules of procedures, it says, town council will not tolerate harassment or personal attacks or discrimination against each other or members of an appointed board, commission, or committees. No one shall be subject to unwelcome ver- verbal or physical conduct that shows hostile based upon gender, race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, religion, age, disability, or national, national origin. Any council member or appointee who violates this provision will be subject to the removal of the meeting. Any council member or appointee acting in violation of this policy will also be subject to censure or other punishments prescribed in the town code. Further section states, public members of the public attending the town council meeting shall observe the same rules of order decorum applicable to the town council. Unauthorized remarks or demonstrations from the audience such as applause, stamping of feet, whistleblowing, boos, yelling, or any other demonstration shall not be permitted. The presiding officer may issue verbi- verbal warnings and elevate as needed, up to and including asking the police officers to remove a member from the, from the dice.
And, and just, and just to clarify, we've been talking in singulars, if we have a situation, we have a, a group of people that are just refused to become peaceable or whatnot, can they literally escort a whole group of people out of that?
Yes, they can.
Okay.
I will say there's one thing that you have to allow, and I should have put it in here, but I didn't think about it till right now, so let's talk about it. If a film crew comes in and they're filming, you have to allow that. If somebody comes in with a person who's gonna come up and make an impassioned speech, and they come all the way right here and they're gonna film, you have to allow that. So there's certain actions that are allowed. So someone speaking, giving their three minutes, talking passionately is allowed as long as that's within decorum, but someone coming in and building a, bringing in a film crew, they're allowed to do that, no matter if they're putting it live on YouTube, no matter if they're gonna use it for a court case, it does not matter what they're going to do with it, they're allowed to. And so we just need to make sure that they're allowed to film in a public building. Other municipalities have asked them to leave, stop filming, and that becomes a huge issue, so we just need to make sure that those people that are in these situations know that, just keep rolling, don't worry about it, it's okay. So I wanted to go over the code of ethics, and I'm gonna touch real quick because that's one thing I've never discussed with you guys, so I think you'll find it interesting. I'm gonna go quick because there's like five pages. So, act in the public interest, just stays work for the public good. Comply with the law, it states that we have to comply with the United States law, Arizona Constitution, Town of Florence codes, policies, laws pertaining to conflict of interests, election campaigns, financial disclosures, or public open meeting laws. Um, con- conduct of members, refrain from abusive conduct, person, personal, personal charges or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of a member of council, commission, boards, committees, staff, and the public. Respect the process, perform the duties in accordance with the process and the rules of orders established by the town council. Conduct of public meetings, refrain from interrupting other speakers, making personal comments not germane to the business of the body, or otherwise interfering with the orderly conduct of business. Decisions based on merit, base to, base their decisions on merits rather than unrelated considerations. Communications, publicly share subs- information that is relevant to the matter under the consideration before you. Conflict of interest, members will not use their official position to influence government decisions. Members should discuss any issues of conflict of interest with the town attorney. Only the town attorney can discuss conflict of interests. Gifts and favors, do not accept gifts and favors that are not available to the general public. So let's talk about that. If Taco Bell invited you to a grand opening and they wanted to share tacos with you, as long as the entire public was invited to the grand open, opening, and the general public got tacos, we could take those tacos, right? But if it's only for the board and commission, then we would say, that's not acceptable, you know? Um, and don't ever take anything that might compromise, compromise your, um, independence or judgment, or give an appearance of being compromised. Confidential information, respect the rules of confidentiality, use of public resources, do not use public resources unavailable to the general public. Lobbying, we are not allowed to support or oppose ballot measures, not on this floor, not on council floor. Representing a public interest, so we ask that no member of council, no member of board, a board or commission appear on behalf of a private interest or a third party. Advocacy, represent the official policies or the position of the Town Flor- Florence Council, boards, commission, committee, or committees to the best of their ability. Individual and pos- opinions, positions, members will be, state that they do not represent the town. That means that if you are representing the town and you're having a statement outside of what the town's adopted, you just clearly have to say that, I'm not representing the opinions of the Town of Florence, this is my own. I'm here as John Doe citizen, not in a board or commission capacity. Independence of commission members, council members will refrain from using their position to unduly influence the deliberation or the outcome of the commission, board, or committee proceeding. Positive work environment, we want to have fun, everybody wants to be positive. Um, public meeting items, keep things in the public except for when directed by the attorney. That means all things are in the public unless we're going into e-session, and we can only go into e-session under very limited rules. Public speaking, a member of the board, commission, or council shall declare they are speaking as a council member, board member, commission member, or if it is their individual opinion and not the opinion of the majority of the council. Implementation, this is self-enforcing. So who is the one who, who enforces the rules? Council enforces the rules upon council. Council enforces the rules upon boards and commissions. Staff is not involved in the enforcing of- Staff is not involved in the enforcing of rules and regulations amongst the elected officials nor the appointed officials. So that's not our role. That's not the role we play. So next steps. Next steps are, I had a meeting which Commissioner Frost stated with the commission, the chairperson and the vice chair. And I will be putting together those meeting notes based on the comments they provided. I'll be sending it out to the rest of the commission so you can see what that was. The vice chair also distributed questions to me that were answered. So I will also be distributing those to the rest of the commission. And then talk to your staff liaison who is offered for the board and commission training. And what it is, it's the American Planning Association that has board and commission training. They used to do it live and in person, but now there's so many people, we're doing them online. So we can do it for $45 for an individual viewing or we can do a group viewing that's shareable for only $200. So we just need you to get back with your liaison. Let him know how we'd like to do the meeting so we can get that all set up and get links out to you. Exciting times. Love training. And if you want more training from the clerk's office, we're thrilled to come. We love to be here. And again, we appreciate that you attend our trainings when we put them on and we hope that you keep supporting us by attending trainings. And with that, if you have any questions, yes, sir.
That training that you just suggested for planning and zoning commission members?
Yes, sir.
Is this a one day, a half a day, or a two hour, or one hour? What is this?
It's as if you attended a conference in person, but you can break it down into portions. I would say it's probably about four hours.
Four hours, okay.
Four hours of good stuff.
So that might make it difficult for us to all come together for a four-hour stretch to get the discount rate of $200.
We are very proud of you with individual links. We just want you to have the training that you deserve to have.
Is this the same training that's been out for a few years that I may have taken before?
It may be because right now on the APA site, it lists the 2021 training as what is available. There's not a training yet for 2022 and I did not see anything for 2023 yet.
Thank you.
And with that, if you have no other questions, thank you so much for allowing me to take so much of your time.
Commission members, any other questions? Great. Thank you very much.
I'd be happy to speak to you after the meeting, sir.
There we go. Thank you. We appreciate our town attorney being in attendance with us this evening and thank you. 6C. Presentation approval, approval of conditions or denial of a design review application submitted by Evergreen Hunt Highway for the new drive-through Starbucks business on Pad A at the northern end of the Anthem Marketplace, which is a northeast corner of Hunt Highway and Merrill Ranch Parkway. Maricela, looks like you have a staff presentation ready.
Chairman, vice chair, members of the commission, we received a design review application from Starbucks or from the Evergreen LLC for a Starbucks. It's not my usual setup. Okay. So Evergreen Hunt Highway LLC, they're the ones in charge of the Anthem Marketplace on the east side of Hunt Highway or the northeast side of a corner of Hunt Highway and Merrill Ranch Parkway. This is within the Anthem at Merrill Ranch Planned Unit Development, or PUD, that marketplace specifically is zoned for business, highway, commercial, or B2. What is proposed is a Starbucks drive-through. The piece of land that is specifically on is a pad that was a recent split that was approved by town council in 2022. And it is the northernmost site within this marketplace. The B2 zoning does allow for the development of a restaurant or slash café. And that amended final plat allows for this new lot to go forward. Evergreen is looking to develop the 2,365 square foot building. They're going to lease it to Starbucks. And along with that building, there's a 300 square foot patio. And that's for the outdoor. And a drive-through lane that is 300 linear feet.
So, Maricela, can I interrupt you? And that's a really interesting number, 300 linear feet of drive-through. How many vehicles would you estimate can stack in that?
Evergreen has told us that the staff will be 15 cars.
15 cars.
15 cars can fit in that drive-through at one time.
Thank you.
So here on the side, we see a map of where this project is located. So the northernmost corner, located right there. And then just a more satellite view on your right. To the south of this project is the Autozone, which recently just got their building permit approved. And they are going to go ahead and start moving forward with that building. But here's just a look at the site overall. So here's the northernmost access point. It's kind of hard to see on this. But it's gray here. And then you have your parking area and the pad for the building. Now, the structure itself is 22 feet high, which is less than the maximum of 40 feet. The number of parking spaces that will be provided for this lot is 32 spaces. What's required by the planned unit development is 11. And what's required by our code itself is just a little bit over 11. I had... 11 for 50. So it meets both of them because it was 11 were required for the stalls. But it meets the PUD. It doesn't have to meet the town code. It just needs to meet the PUD, which required the 11. And there are two ADA spaces that are provided as well. Now, all the setbacks that are required within the B2 zoning, 25 in the front, 10 on the street sides, and 10 in the rear, all of those have been met within the site plan. And the design review itself does look at the colors. Because it is done by the Evergreen group, they've made sure to fall within their color palette that they've had set up in this market, which is variety of your browns, grays, tans to meet that kind of desert look that surrounds the area. The building itself is going to be a CMU block, but it's got, it's kind of got a block veneer, but it's got that sandblasting texture just to give it a good aesthetic look. There are metal awnings located on the structure to provide shading to the front and sides. And some umbrellas will be provided for seating outside to provide the shade, especially in these hot summers, although I don't know who'd be sitting outside. And as I said, there's a 300-foot queue. What is required by our code is 100 feet. So this is three times longer than what is required. And as I said previously, 15 cars can fit in that Starbucks drive-through. So here's a look at the south elevation. So coming in from, say, towards the Autozone area, the west, pointing towards a drive-through, the back where the cars line up, and then also the drive-through side. So the vacant area currently doesn't have any landscaping established. That will be added along with the building and that's going to be all around the building. The plants, because it is Evergreen, they have their own plant list. So they've worked to meet that as well as the low water plant list that is set by Pinell County. The plans do include some light fixtures within the building. All standards. In terms of lighting, will match the existing developments that are there, like the Autozone and the Superstar Car Wash. And they have side sightings to prevent spillage of that lighting. And they are looking to take away a couple of extraneous lighting that they found on their plans that may be a little bit too bright. Signage Starbucks, the company itself, once they work towards putting in a permit, they will submit a signed package that's separate from this design review. What you see in the elevation is just kind of a standard logo that they're putting in. Kim Lee Horn did prepare a traffic impact statement for the site. It was approved by the town engineer. And since the land use retail composition of the center has changed over time, the traffic impact needs were revisited and that's why they did this statement. So the original land use plan had the potential to generate 15,302 daily trips. 1,021 trips occurring peak hours of the AM, 1,570 in the PM. Based on Kim Lee Horn's analysis by their certified engineers, the proposed land use changes that they've made or to have the Starbucks actually decrease the overall daily peak hour trips from that 15,302 to 13,766.
And, Maricela, just to make sure that there's no confusion, those daily trips you're talking about is for the entire commercial center at that corner?
Yes.
Safeway, everything, the bank, everything?
So they're not going to completely go over the traffic that was set up for that center. So therefore, these land use changes are not going to significantly impact the traffic conditions that originally envisioned for this development. Here's a visual of the landscape plan. You have your trees on the side to help buffer some of that traffic that you'll see in the drive-through. We have several pedestrian walkways included so people can get to this Starbucks safely. And of course, you have bushes and land aisles within the parking to break up some of those parking spaces. With that, staff has found that their request is in compliance not only with the development standards set by the planned unit development for the Anthem Marketplace, but also found, that wasn't found there, but found in the town code. With that, staff recommends approval of the design review with conditions listed in the staff report. Those conditions being the developer has one year from the date of approval to attain a building permit. And the Planning and Zoning Commission may move to approve... Oh, that's not one... I believe that's the only condition. Oh, no. It's at the beginning. "No portion of the parking lot area can be used for storage and/or display of merchandise. The projects shall comply with all applicable town codes, including but not limited to building, fire, and engineering codes and requirements. And that the Starbucks store be developed in substantial conformance with the site plan, building elevations, building materials, landscape plan, and other aspects of the submittals provided within this design review application. Of course, there are also any additional conditions deemed necessary by the Planning and Zoning Commission." And with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission may move to approve with these conditions or deny the design review application for PZ 2322. Are there any questions? We do have the representative, Caitlin Fox, here from Evergreen. If there are any questions that need to be directed to her.
Commission members?
I have no comments here.
Maybe I missed something and I apologize. But the original land use plan had the potential to generate 15,302 daily trips.
Cool.
They redid it, reduced the number of daily trips, but we have more homes coming in. I don't understand the math on that. What am I missing?
So it's just the protected people that are going to come into this marketplace?
No, I get that, but I'm just saying we're adding new residents. So there's more people, but yet there's less traffic. I'm just, I'm not seeing how that works.
And I think what's going on here is that their original traffic plan had already predicted that population around there based on the densities of the zoning districts.
Okay, thank you. That was the clarification I was looking for. I was just like, wait, how's that?
Mr. Chairman, did you want me to clarify that?
Close it.
Please go ahead. Thank you.
The land use composition changed. There was a nursery originally planned and some large retail that was planned. So and a large restaurant. And the composition of the center changed. And with the different retail uses, changes the trip generation. So it's the uses within the center that changed, which altered the trip generation because each use has a different trip generation. So that's why the composition changed. So that changed the traffic generation.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
I just wanted to be sure I understand this. So the traffic is coming into the shopping center and then there's the 15-car drive-through lane that's in the shopping center. So there's no risk that if the line is more than 15 cars that you're ever backing out into Hunt Highway. That's what...
It should not back out at Hunt Highway.
Thank you.
Maricela, just a quick question because I'm not exactly sure how the town deals with this. But when I looked at the Optimus Engineering provided a drainage statement in here. But in this situation, I'm sure that the town requires that retention basins drain within a certain amount of time so that we don't get vector problems. If this situation doesn't work and I was... They make a statement here, "Flows generated onsite will not alter the pre-development condition of the existing commercial center." Pre-development, this was, you know, pretty open and water perked into the ground and everything was good. Now they're covering it with a whole bunch of impervious material, but making the statement, and I think I might be missing something here because I just want to make sure that if things don't work, who's responsible? Is it Starbucks or is it the center itself that's going to correct the situation?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, I believe when the center was originally proposed, there was a master drainage plan center, which had retention, either underground or above grounds retention. So they took in consideration all of the whole development of all the pads with that master drainage plan. And so that's been already instructed. So this doesn't contribute more to that is what I believe that Kim Lee Horn is saying with that statement. The offsites have been handled. This isn't going to, the offsites can be handled as well as the onsite drainage. I believe that's what that statement is supposed to be.
So basically, it's all being handled under a master plan and should anything happen, then the master plan will take care of any problems that happen out there. Okay, I'm good with that.
That's correct.
And with that, are we ready to make a motion on this project?
Are you making a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve PZ 23-22, the Starbucks, with the staff recommendations.
I'll second. Any one of us can take a mic.
Okay, we have a... We have a motion by Vice Chair Adam and a second by Commissioner Vanderstark. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We good on that, Maricela?
Yes.
Motion for approval. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to old business. Presentation approval, approval of conditions or denial of a temporary use permit, PZ-23-18, to use four lots for a model home sales office and construction office. Properties are located within the Western Crossings at Centennial Park Avenue and SR 287. This is a continuation of the items discussed held on June 22. And before I left that, I should have said, Ms. Fox, thank you for coming down here and being patient with us while we did a bunch of other business. We appreciate you bringing this business into our community.
Chairman Frost, Madam Vice Chair, this evening presentation, I'd like to cover four general areas. First, I'd like to provide a summary of the request. I know the commission is familiar with this request because you've considered it two separate meetings on June 1 and June 22. However, there are members of the public that may be online that are not familiar with it. So I'll just do a brief summary of the request. Second of all, I'd like to talk about what a temporary use permit is and how the staff evaluate it and how the commission should evaluate it. And then third, answer Planning and Zoning Commission questions. I know there were several questions that perhaps were not adequately answered at the previous meetings. So we'd like to address those as clearly and concisely as possible. There's also tonight, there's a representative of the developer here, Ryan Betts from Forestar, who's the owner and developer of the property. And he may be able to give you more... you more, um, uh, real-time answers to the questions that I, I don't have, as well as a representative, um, from D.R. Horton, who is the, um, the builder, the home builder, that will be doing the vertical construction. And the fourth area that I'd like to talk about is the findings, what I call findings of fact, based upon staff's evaluation of the temporary use permit. So, with that said, I'll start off with the request here, if I can get this thing to work. Is it working? Oh, there you go. Oh, you got it. Okay, sorry about that. The applicant is D.R. Horton. Uh, what is the request? It's to allow a, uh, model home sales office and a construction sales office. Where is it located? It's located on four lots, uh, within the Western Crossing subdivision, and I'll provide you a map of that in a minute here. The, uh, when, um, will it occur? Building occupancy for sales office will not occur until all onsite and offsite infrastructure is installed and operational. The hours of operation, Monday, um, twelve noon to six PM, Tuesday through Friday, ten AM to six PM, Saturday and Sunday, ten AM to six PM. How many people will be coming to this, based upon past experience with D.R. Horton at other similar projects, uh, in the vicinity? They're looking at eighteen to twenty-five visitors per week, uh, coming to the...
Can I interrupt you really quick, Harvey? And that's because there's just a little bit of, of confusion here. At one point in, in the staff information, it says visitors, and another point, it says vehicles. And I think vehicles is probably the correct terminology here, probably not eighteen to twenty-five people, it's eighteen to twenty-five vehicles.
Vehicles.
So I just wanted to make sure, 'cause it's, it's used two different ways, and here it says visitor, but I, I thought you meant vehicles.
Thank you for that. Yes, I, vehicles is more appropriate. The time limitation, uh, the code only allows for the commission to grant a two-year, uh, two years for a temporary, uh, temporary use permit. However, the commission can, uh, approve an extension to that, uh, after the two, prior to the two years coming up. And then the, um, improvements, why is it not doing? Okay, there you go. Um, the lots will be landscaped, and the parking areas will have compacted decomposed granite for development. The elevations for the sales office basically will be the appearance of model homes that will be converted to homes for sale at the subdivision build-out. The PNZ approval allows for the temporary use of these four lots to use, be used for offices and parking, not for single-family homes, but for, for offices. The zoning is single-family residential within the Western Century Development PUD, which was approved by the town two thousand and three. So this is the entire Western Crossing development, and the four lots are there in the lower left-hand corner, or my left-hand corner, of the, um, screen there, off Keating Street. There are the four lots, the site plans for the four lots with the sales office and the construction parking. And these are the elevations of the two, uh, model homes that will be used for sales office. So that's the summary of the request. Now, what is a temporary use permit? Um, they're allowed, uh, temporary use permit is, uh, approved by either the commission or the director, uh, for certain uses intended to be temporary in nature. And, uh, the code establishes a process for review and approval of these uses, and, uh, for a limited duration. So, the code, uh, prov, uh, contemplates that what I'm telling you could be used for other temporary uses within the community. It just so happened, we're talking about model home complex in this particular case. So, the code does require a model home complex to receive a temporary use permit. For anything over forty-five days, the PNZ approval is required. Anything less than forty-five days, the director can, uh, approve. Now, in terms of how do you evaluate a temporary use permit, and under what conditions? There are four general criteria in the zoning, or, uh, in the town code, or zoning ordinance, that, that, um, provides the, the means for evaluating a temporary use permit. And they're subjective, they're, they're, um, they're general in nature, because they're intended to be that way, because they can apply to other temporary uses within the community, as I indicated. So generally, the first one is about, um, uh, a negative impact on adjacent properties. You make a judgment as to how this temporary use will affect adjacent properties. Will it have a negative impact, uh, or will it, uh, not have it? Does it, does it, is it detrimental to the health, safety, peace, and comfort of the general welfare of persons residing or working in the area? A second one, is it consistent with the land use permitted by the present zoning district? If it's some use that's, that's incompatible to the z, district, then you, perhaps, the commission would not want to approve that. Is the proposed use, um, will not unreasonably interfere with pedestrian or vehicular traffic or circulation in the area? That's another criteria. And then, fourthly, appropriate controls are in place that will ensure that the premises will be kept clean, sanitary, free of litter, and, uh, on all circulation parking surfaces will, uh, have a suitable dust-controlled sur, uh, surface. So, those are the four general criteria you use to evaluate whether this temporary use permit, uh, fits the, the area that it's being proposed in. Now, the code, and the town code also provides, it allows the planning commission to impose reasonable conditions with the approval of a temporary use permit. And these are the reasonable conditions that are listed, um, it deals with, as I indicated, they're general in nature, some of them may not apply, some of them do apply. Vehicular ingress and egress, traffic circulation, and this relates to the request at hand, not the entire subdivision, but the request before the commission tonight is the model, the temporary use permit for the model home complex, not the entire subdivision. However, it is related. Uh, dust control surface, we talked about, the parking lot, lighting, solid waste removal, uh, the hours of operation of an event, or the duration of the permit for a certain, uh, activity or event. The, uh, final plans for assurance that the conditions of approval will be met, any bonds or guarantees for cleanup or removal of structure, uh, and any other conditions that the, uh, decision-making authority, which is the planning commission, deem necessary to cap, uh, to carry out the intent and purpose of this section. Now, this, this is very broad, and, um, but there are parameters that the, the commission needs to be aware of. There, we, we have, uh, there's zoning, uh, case law that provides for what's reasonable and what's not reasonable. So you're saying, what, to you is reasonable, may not be to someone else, what's fair, what's not fair. So there's two criteria that most, um, that case law generally follows. Uh, the first thing you look at is, um, is there an essential nexus? Does the condition that you're imposing, is it related to, is it addressed the, the issue or the, the request at hand? And, uh...
Director, is that, do we have that?
No, you don't have that.
What you're talking about now?
I, I can, I'm giving you some background.
Okay, I was just asking if, was it in our package?
You don't have that in your...
All right, thank you.
I'm just giving some context to how, um, so it's not open-ended. The, the conditions you, uh, impose cannot be open-ended, it can't be unreasonable, so I'm giving you what case law basically says is generally accepted, uh, conditions. I'll give an ex, one is, there's a nexus, and second of all, what's called rough proportionality. So I'll, let me give you an example. So you're looking at a subdivision plot. I think the best, simplest example I can think of, off the top of my head. Um, so, in a subdivision, um, this assumes that there is, town has policies and regulations that they're looking at in terms of the subdivision. Uh, the commission says, "I want a five-acre neighborhood park to serve this subdivision." That's a, that's generally a reasonable request for a new subdivision. But if you ask for them to put in a fifty-acre regional park to serve the entire community, that's not proportioned to what the, the demand on the community is. So, it had, there has to be some nexus, so the subdivision, it's a, it's a family-oriented community, or have kids, so you should have a neighborhood park. So that makes a lot of sense, and that's a reasonable requirement and a condition. But if you're asking them to put in a regional park with ballfields that would serve, uh, a larger area, a much larger area than the, for the, uh, serve basically the whole community, that doesn't meet the rough proportionality test. So those are the two things, that's the basic, uh, criteria you apply when you're gonna impose a condition. Is it, is it related to what the, the request at hand is? And is it roughly proportioned to what the demand that that, that request is gonna put on the community? So, I just wanted to give some context to that, and, um, you can disagree with the, um, you know, that's very subjective, uh, and it's been litigated. And so there are examples, and there's case law that, that, uh, that drives those issues, so, um, are, are there any questions about that? I, I just wanted to make sure you, your, um, as I, as I move forward on this. So in terms of the planning commission, they, uh, your decision is final, except it could be appealed to the town council by written request of the applicant, if they feel, they felt that, uh, well, it's denied, or one of the, uh, conditions you impose is not reasonable. And, and they find that it, it's a hindrance to their development, um, they can appeal that to the council. And if, if the director, myself, if I had approved a, a use permit that is less than forty-five days, and they didn't feel that that was what I imposed some conditions they didn't like, they could appeal it to the planning commission. So that's the process, how it works. So, with that said, I'll go into the questions and try to answer those as incisely as I can. Let me get some water. Okay. So, over, it's been over twenty, twenty years ago, the decision was made that we're gonna have two hundred and seventy-two single-family homes in this area called Western Crossing. It wasn't called that twenty years ago. So that decision was made by a previous town council, and a plat, the first phase of that plat, was approved about fifteen years ago. And that established where the access point is onto Highway two eighty-seven. That plat, it was recorded in two thousand and six. And the only way you can change that plat is if the, the, um, the applicant wishes to change it, and the town approves a replat. So, the phase two of the, the Western Crossing was approved last year, as the commission is, is aware. And as I indicated, the plat can, the, the plats have already been recorded, they generally cannot be changed unless the developer initiates a change, and the town approves the change. Uh, one of the questions is, uh, wanted a secondary access, that's, uh, because of, um, traffic safety. Um, as I, as I indicated previously, the town is proposing a secondary access, uh, to be included, and, um, it's already included in the CIP, which would be an extension of Centennial Park to Adamsville. Now, it's in next year, in next year's CIP, which is, uh, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, would be design, and then twenty-five, twenty-six, I believe, would be construction. Now, that's contingent on funding by the town council. Um, they, uh, I believe the manager is here, can speak to this a little bit better. He's asked the public works director to do a preliminary analysis of this, uh, particular, uh, road extension, and so priorities do change over time, and every, every budget year, uh, at time of budget, the town council reviews the CIP, and priorities change over time, and funding changes. So, I, that is what the plan is today, that's what our CIP says in terms of that road. But that's a, that's a town council decision, but it's one that, um, I had put in, that, that, that the planning commission recommends, that the, um, that the town management and town council, uh, consider that in the future, that that, that extension be considered, um, and move forward with that. In terms of when it'll happen, I mentioned, it's, it's still somewhat, uh, open-ended, as I indicated, the design and then construction. So what are onsite subdivision improvements? The developer is required to pave the roads, put curbing gutter, install water and sewer lines, install the drainage improvements, do the open space amenities. We have, we're holding two bonds. We have a bond, a performance bond for phase one, and, as well as phase two. When will the onsite improvements be completed? Uh, the developer has given me a September, October timeframe for phase one, uh, and depending on weather, of course. And then phase two improvements would be planned, um, probably next year. However, they can probably elaborate more, uh, on terms of timing than I can. Uh, so what are off-site improvements? The off-site improvements is the intersection, the improvements at the intersection of Centennial Park Avenue and, uh, Centennial Park Road. And, the way that, um, the way that was determined in terms of what improvements would be made, the, um, developer retained the services of a traffic, a professional traffic engineer who you heard from last meeting on, note, June twenty-second. She presented, uh, uh, information on that, uh, traffic, um, analysis she did. That, based upon that traffic report, and the, her recommendations, Cohen Van Lu, the engineer, the professional engineer, drew up plans for that, uh, based upon that traffic report. Those, those two documents were submitted to Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, who has approved those. I've seen the stamped approved plans for that, for those improvements. And they are, um, uh, they're, the developer is now waiting for the, he submitted his traffic control plan. They're not gonna close the intersection during construction, so they wanna maintain the construct, uh, maintain, uh, traffic through that intersection, which is very much appreciated, um, by everyone, I'm sure. So, the, they need to have a traffic control plan, and that traffic control plan has to be submitted, uh, to an agency for approval, and that's my understanding what, um, uh, Four Star has done, and they can talk to you a little bit more about that. So, the, the project, this, the model home complex, as you recall, was, uh, continued at the June first meeting until the commission could see the traffic improvements that were proposed at this intersection, which was provided to you at the last meeting. It's a, it's also in your packet this evening. So when will that be done? What timeframe? Some of it's dependent on the, the permit from ADOT, and I'll let the, I'll let Ryan from, um, Four Star address that, um, maybe a little bit, uh, elaborate more on that. So next question, I know there were a lot of questions about what substantial completion means, and I didn't do a very good job of answering that at the last meeting, so I thought I'd, I wanted to clarify some things on that one. Substantial completion, uh, is a generally accepted term in the construction industry, uh, and it's widely accepted. What is, what is substantial completion means? Well, it means that the roads are paved, the curbing gutter is in, the water line has been pressure-tested, it's been chlorinated, the sewer line, a camera's gone through the sewer... The sewer line, a camera's gone through the sewer line, made sure that the slopes are correct. It's operational, the water and sewer is operational. The drainage system has been tested possibly, you know, it drains within the 36 hours per the Pinell County requirements. The open space areas have been amenitized. That is, basically, the subdivision is completed. However, there may be broken curbs, there may be a manhole, or a manhole cover that's cracked, it needs to be replaced. There may be a sign that's missing. We're not going to hold up permits for something like that. Basically, it's substantially completed, they can, they can get a permit and start construction of a house. When, when the roads are in, the water and sewer are working, the drainage system's in, the open space areas are amenitized. So, that is, that's basically when we would issue permits. When will the sales office be open and operational? The, the trigger, the town basically has three ways that we hold the developer's feet to the fire. We have the performance bond, as you, we've talked about a little bit, and that's typically used for improvements. A second one, you can withhold building permits. A third one is to withhold certificates of occupancy. Those are the three mechanisms that a town or a city uses to hold a developer's feet to the fire. And we are doing that, and we have put the mechanisms in place to do that by withholding, withhold, withholding CFO for both the model home complex until there's substantial completion of the improvements within the intersection of 287 and Centennial Park. That's the staff's recommendation. Now, the commission, I'll go, let me move on before I go into. So, I've talked about the guarantees the staff, the town has to make sure the onsite improvements are completed, and the offsite improvements are completed. So, the question is not if they're going to be completed, it's not a question if the offsites are going to be completed. They will be completed. We have guarantees in place that they'll be completed. We have mechanisms in place to make sure they'll be completed. So, the only thing questioned is when. So, when. And to withhold, to withhold building permits until everything's in is not reasonable. It's not a reasonable condition, it's not standard in the construction industry, in any community. So, we want to be reasonable, we need to make sure that we are fair to the citizens of the community, as well as the developer. I already talked about the traffic impact analysis, and how that was submitted to ADOT, approved by ADOT, as well as the plans. The design of the offsite improvements has been determined. The, that's basically, I think I've answered all the questions, you may have some other questions, and I think the developer can elaborate on some. If you, at this point in time, if you have any other questions, maybe, before I get into the other aspect of my presentation. If not, I'll just continue. So, the red area is the second phase. We're really focusing on Phase One here, the area that's plotted on this map. That's Phase Two, which is, and so, summary, I wanted to give you a summary of the circulation and traffic issues, since that is the primary concern of the commission and the citizens, that Centennial Park Access was approved onto 287 with Phase One final plat. That's, that'll be the only public access point onto, into Western Crossing, as well as Centennial Park. Phase One final plat provides for three vehicular access points onto Centennial Park. The town engineer also reviewed the traffic impact analysis for the Phase Two preliminary plat and found it acceptable. And I already indicated, the town manager had indicated that the alternative access to Adamsville Road will be evaluated, and it is included in the CIP. And that Forestar has submitted, their intersection improvement plans have been approved, waiting for the encroachment permit or the traffic control permit. Here's the improvements to that intersection, which you looked at at the last meeting. We can go over this in greater detail if you, if you'd like. So, summary of the timeline, D.R. Horton will not begin construction of houses until they get ownership of the lots, and the lots need to have water, sewer, and paved roads. As simple as that. They're looking at a September, October timeframe. The sales office and construction office won't be occupied until there's substantial completion of that intersection improvements. And as soon as, I'll let, I'll let Ryan talk about the timing for that more. So, basically, the findings of fact, I call it, are the basis for staff's recommendation. And this is the basis for why we're recommending approval. Now, the commission may not agree with this, and which is perfectly acceptable, there, it's a judgment call, but we feel like the two model homes, as used as offices, will not negatively impact people residing or working nearby. As we indicated, 25, 20, 18 to 25 vehicles coming into the subdivision to look at, to look at housing plans, and to talk to a salesperson about buying a home, is not going to, is not going to be a negative impact to the community. The sales office will have limited hours of operation. Most people look at new model homes on weekends, primarily on Sundays, or later in the evening when people get off work. They'll be compacted, decomposed, grannied on the parking lot, so it won't generate dust when people come in to the, to the model homes. And there's also parking on street, because the streets will be paved. The zoning, the R1 zoning is, supports a temporary use of the houses with the offices that will later be converted to houses. So, we're not asking for, or the developers not asking for a use that is outside the bounds of a subdivision. There are actual houses that will be used as sales offices, but will be later converted to, for single-family sale. And a model home complex is a complimentary and typical use within any new subdivision throughout the Phoenix metropolitan area, as well as California and other areas and other states. It's a very common thing. So, with that, we recommend approval with the stipulations that are listed in the staff report. You have those before you, if you want me to go over those, I can. But that concludes my comments. And I guess the, finally, the county, the planning commission may move to approve with the listed conditions, amend or add additional conditions for approval, or deny the temporary use permit. Now, we have questions.
Commission members, or should we hear from Ryan first, and then enter any questions? Ryan, did you have some additional education you'd like to provide to us? And Ryan, if you would please, I have your first name, but not your full name, so if you say your full name for the record, please.
Chairman, Vice Chair, Commission, Ryan Bettis with Forestar. Just kind of going over timeline, we've been working, sorry, just Mike, been working on this project for a year now, and we're behind, but we are working fast as we can to get it paved, to get it finished up for our pretty much largest client, D.R. Horton. Next week, the streets crew start, so we will be beginning the paving section of the subdivision, along with Centennial Parkway. That crew is then scheduled to mobilize right onto 287 and begin the ADOT work, providing that the permit is released from ADOT within the next week or two. The traffic control plan that they requested went in today, and actually, four versions of it went in because of the way the road is and the design, we have to flip-flop traffic many times. So, we had to submit four versions, that's why it took an extra three days. You know, we're doing our best to keep the residents happy as we can, we keep working on keeping things clean. I talked to Harvey, talked to Russ, we're always trying to keep everything up in order. Part of the thing that was mentioned earlier about the CIP program, the new water line that went in Centennial Park was an actual city or town of Florence CIP program for a 12-inch water line. It was going to go in after I paved, and so, I talked to Mr. Chris Solis, and we worked out an agreement to put the line in early, so that once we put in brand-new streets, it wasn't ripped up. I've known Chris for quite some time, and it was something that we were able to work on, because it just seems short-sighted to just not do it when it should have been done. Now, it is only through the extension of the Centennial Park improvements that we are doing, but it's just another one that we're trying to work with the town, we want to work through the town to make the best product we can. And then, we definitely don't want to ruffle feathers and make people angry. I know there's been a lot of that lately. Sorry, I missed the last meeting, that was happening in another state, not another project, but we're, you know, here for the long haul. This is, you know, we have Phase Two starting in roughly about a month, and, you know, bringing these lots up, and as these lots come online, and we finish stuff off, D.R. Horton isn't planning to go start 200 lots tomorrow. You know, they're going to do five to 10 a month, something like that, depending on what the sales pace is, so kind of something to think in consideration, there's not going to be 100 people moving in in a week. It's going to be a slow buildup of progress between the phases of the project, as the sales pace will dictate how quickly lots come on. And like anyone kind of knows with home sales, if you release like 50 lots, you know, the demand will not probably be there, so you release in smaller portions, and that way you kind of have a little bit of built-up demand. So, that was one of the things that, and I mentioned Harvey, just going like, you know, we're only doing half portions of each of these phases, as far as sales releases, just in order to not overload too many things. And I don't know if the local economy can support also throwing up 100 homes overnight. It's just not a real feasible option. So, we will get it done, and with the goal to be by September, the subdivision and Centennial paved, the highway ADOT work, you know, we're looking into October. Anything that can be done to speed it up will be done, because when ADOT issues a permit, they're going to say, "You can start this day, and by this day, I don't care what you do, you got to be done." So, we don't know what that is yet. Until they issue the permit, we have it in hand and have a pre-con with them, they'll tell us when we can start and when we have to be gone. So, then, we will then relay that information to the town and go like, "All right, and we'll work, you know, 10-hour shifts or whatever needs to be done." We have a really good game plan, we have a lot of large equipment coming out to do this work, so we can get through it quickly. And I'm working on alternate backups right now for if we encounter problem A, B, or C. And I should have a couple of those in-hand backpocket next week, because things happen, so I'm trying to predict, which is kind of unpredictable. It's, I don't know what's under the highway, it's been there for a while. So, can I answer anyone's questions? I'd be more than happy to.
Commission members?
No, no comments here. I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, thank you very much for being here. On June 22nd, we got the good news that you all had your approval from ADOT on your design review, and we were hoping, within a couple of weeks, you would have your permit. Is there any reason that's been given to you, that, why you don't have your permit?
So, excuse me, Vice Chair, we had to then reissue new certificates of insurance by the contractor. We had to verify the traffic control contractor was an approved ADOT person, which we are using roadway electric. Then they came back and said, "Yeps, you're good to go." Some bonding information had to be sent in, and then the request or requirement for the traffic control was then submitted.
So, we're back to hoping for a couple of weeks. I understand, it's ADOT, but you've answered all their questions.
They've said, "Three days, if there's no comments." You know, it did take me six and a half months to get these plans approved, my guess is we're going to have comments on the traffic control plan.
And you said comments, right, on the traffic?
Yeah, comments, they'll write it up and don't like sizing, spacing, or something, but, you know, we're using ADOT-approved traffic control companies, they know, and they know this area very well.
Very good, we appreciate you coming down and talking to us and spending some time with us, and we will look forward to this product. We've seen what the homes are predicted to look like, and I think it'll be a great asset for the community. And just speaking for myself, I really appreciate that in our packet here, the Cohen Van Lou design plans were put in there, because I looked for numbers, and I see that both of those stacking lanes, right-hand end and left-hand end, are both designed to be just under 300 feet in length. So, that gives us, you know, a feeling of how much stacking capability that we'll have out there. And it's just kind of funny that I thought today that we're stacking 300 feet for a coffee establishment, 300 feet for 15 cars, and it's just interesting that in the same conversation, a few minutes later, we're stacking virtually the same amount to get people off a, off a road segment. So, it kind of gives us at least a vision of what's happening out there. So, I appreciate the details that were provided very much. Thank you.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Please go ahead, I'm sorry.
I move that we, that we accept the, or approve the request with the listed conditions, the temporary reuse permit, 2318, PZ 2318.
Okay, is there a second? I will second that.
I thought you said, did you, you seconded?
I'll second that. So, we have a motion for approval by Commissioner Pro and I did the second. All in favor, please vote aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And we, if, it sounds like we didn't get, do we get, let's do a roll call, just so we know exactly what's happening. Okay, I, chairman will vote aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Commissioner Pro votes aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Capelongo and Vanderstark both vote nay, so on a vote of three to two, this passes. Director's report. Harvey, it looks like you're back in the hot seat again.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, the only thing I have to report is next meeting, we do have a preliminary plat from Pulte Homes on Unit 30. I'm sorry, can you make sure I get there? Next meeting, we do have a preliminary plat for, in Anthem, with Pulte Homes for Unit 30B, and this was one that originally was, Unit 30 was a large plat that the, this town had previously approved, and it had 98 lots, and then it had to be reduced to Unit 30A, which had 58. So, they're coming back for the remainder. The reason it was reduced is because of water that wasn't available through Epcor, so they reduced that. And then, since then, they have, now they have sufficient water to move forward with the rest of the subdivision, so we're getting another plat for Unit 30. So, that's, that's the purpose of that. I don't have anything else to report unless you have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Call to the commission, current events, commission members?
I just want to clarify my no vote on that. The one stipulation that I had was that we had an actual date permit in hand. And while the presentation given was detailed, it was nothing we didn't know from the last two weeks, the last two meetings. Nothing new was gleaned there. So, again, just can't get a date, which seems to be the way things work.
So, I don't want to seize defeat from the mouth of victory.
So I don't want to seize defeat from the mouth of victory. I appreciate everyone's hard work, and I don't know if everyone knows, there's been an awful lot of hard work that's gone into this decision. I'll be the one to state the elephant in the room. This commission has asked since June 2nd why the off-site improvements couldn't happen, assuming the ADOT permit, why that couldn't happen before the model homes were built. In doing our due diligence and hearing the residents, I think the issue we have is we're not starting from the same place. I agree, right now, this very minute, those two model homes are going to make no significant worse damage. But what we've heard all along was from 2003 and 2006, when the final plan neglected to add the secondary egress, we heard from the county traffic planning department that Route 287 is already a red zone, now, today, is not safe. The residents came in to say they're not comfortable that they're safe right now, today. So before we even get to the model homes having a negative impact, we are not addressing a safety issue that I believe exists today. And that's where we're missing the boat. I think from a commission's perspective, we're not trying to be belligerent, we're asking the due diligence, why couldn't we put the road improvements in to protect the safety of the residents now before the model homes go up? That was simply a question we asked June 2nd. And here we are, our third meeting, with that still being not addressed. It is moot point now. I voted to approve this because, you're right, on the basis of the TUP and what it's going to do in terms of additional negative impact, I think that's negligible. I really want to say to D.R. Horton and to Forestar, we appreciate you, and we want your business. But I feel we have missed opportunity. You have residents that are not feeling safe, and we appear to not being sympathetic. That doesn't mean you have to bend to what they ask for, but I felt a little more priority should have been to answer these questions and let them understand. I understand about the CIP and the secondary egress. I'm not comfortable with this being a commission recommendation. We come and go, we're temporary. That to me, I would like to hear reassuring words from the staff that it's a priority to you as you see the budget through and the planning process for 2024, right? We don't impact that, and I don't want to go away feeling like we've done our job just because it's written now that we think it's a good idea. I'd like to feel that there's some push behind it, because we missed the boat in 2006, and had we not missed the boat, it would have been done. So, but I thank everybody, and I really am very optimistic about this project, I think it's going to go very well. Thank you.
Let me echo the Vice Chair's comments and just send an appreciation out to the public who took their time to come down and talk to us and express their concerns, which hopefully we have tried to address as best that we can. We've got good plans and a process moving forward with our developers out there, and we appreciate that, and we have some controls there that should make everything work like it should. Now changing gears, I have a few other comments, things to bring up. One, just to make sure that you saw that the correct number of heads nod up here when Commissioner Pro asked for regular updates on just what's happening on Hunt Highway and quarterly, that that would happen. Just want to make sure that that sounds okay. Secondly, when I commute in in the morning, I go by the new dentist's office that's happening at the northwest corner of Ruggles and 79, and I noticed in the last few days that landscaping has appeared. I'm a little bit concerned because right exactly on the corner, there is a big bushy plant that I'm concerned might be within the site triangle and might impede people's ability to see when they're in that intersection. So staff, if you'd please take a look at that, I'd appreciate it. And then, the last is just a request, and I voiced this several times, but can we please make it a requirement that when we see preliminary plats come in, that we see the amenities that are associated with those, the trails, the playgrounds, the landscaping, things of that nature? And we have some developers that provide that out of the goodwill of their heart and some that don't. And when they don't, I always feel like we're missing the boat with the people that we represent up here, the community, to try to help ensure that they're getting, as you couched earlier, the right amenities at the scale that's appropriate for the development. So if we could change our requirements, that's a request that I would like to make, that we show that in our preliminary plats. And with that...
Real quick, just a little bit of housekeeping. Anyone who speaks, it's, there's a notification here, it says Talking Trenton Schaefer. Just so the record shows that Trenton wasn't the only one speaking tonight, so, good or bad, I don't want him getting blamed for everything, just...
That's why the clerk's office is having so much problem identifying.
Like you say, right?
Trenton's voice sounds a lot.
Yeah, Trenton's really good with throwing his voice. With that, I'll make my motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Capolongo and a second by Vice Chair Adam to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.